Today is Monday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four at six P M. And this is the Tully Lysley Boardroom of the eighteen eighty-seven building. And I'd like to start the meeting out by thanking political leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and Mr. Tim, I'd like you to roll conference.
Mr. Andre.
Here.
Mr. Gayheart.
Here.
Eric Gordon.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mrs. Kostak.
Here.
Mrs. Reckles.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Ms. Corpus. Mr. Jaime Saravia.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so I don't see, nobody turned in any community participation cards, so we'll skip that. So our next item is the avid overnight travel request.
For those of you who don't or may not know me, I am Laura Griswold. I am one of the avid elected teachers at the high school. And so I just wanted to share with you a little bit today about our avid overnight field trip. We do take a field trip with freshmen and sophomores both to different places, but those are just day trips, so not quite involved. So for the overnight trip, we visit four college campuses. You can go to the next. The first day, the students will see University of Wisconsin-Plattville and U W Madison. And then we stay overnight. And the second day, they will see Madison Area Technical College and U W Whitewater. We like this mix because it gives students an opportunity to see different sized schools, to see a technical college as well as a full four-year school. I'm a big proponent after going through the process with my own kids and then the seniors that I've helped over the years of being on a campus really helps students to make their decisions. So you'll probably hear from some of the students I brought today how even if it's not necessarily a campus they were going to go to, seeing those different types of campuses helps them with that process. So you can go to the next slide. We fundraise for our field trip both by doing parking for the flea market. And then we have a pretzel fundraiser. We sell Milwaukee pretzels. The link is in the slides that I brought if anybody wants to go on to Class Community and order some delicious Milwaukee pretzels. So because we do the fundraising, we're able to provide this trip at no cost to the students, which I think is really nice. Provides an opportunity for a number of students who might not even be able to go on a college visit to see four different campuses. So I think that's great. We do have as part of that trip because we stay overnight. In the evening, we do actually have study tables where the students sit and work on their homework because we know there are going to be classes for a couple days to go on this trip. And surprisingly, they do actually work on the work, and I think they appreciate having that time so that they can work on their missing work. We, we feel like for students, there's a number of benefits that this trip provides, which includes things like being more immersed in the college experience by being on a campus. I think it's great when you can do campus visits during the school year so they can really be a part of what's going on on the campus. As we go on that trip and students get back on the bus after a different campus, you could hear them like the hustle and bustle about they're excited about their choices and the possibilities and the options that they have. So I think that part of it is great. It helps them get a better understanding of the costs associated with choices that they might make in schools. It helps them to see parts of schools that they might not even know about. I know typically a lot of our group is really impressed by seeing Madison Technical College and all that it has to offer. Helps them build excitement and it really helps them to bond as a group that in turn helps them to support each other. Junior and senior years, they go through those difficult life choices about what are their plans going to be after high school. So we feel like that provides them with some great opportunities. I did bring with me today four current seniors, avid, who are seniors in the avid elective, who went on the trip last year, and they're just gonna share a little bit about either what they gained from the experience or how it helped their decision. So. I didn't tell you, but introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Aiden Gary. I did go on it last year as a little one grader. I am now a twelfth grader, obviously. From the experience, I really kind of learned like what type of college I wanted to go to. As my pathway that I plan on going down is engineering and going to Plattville, I was kind of like, oh, I'll probably want to go here as it's known for its engineering and known for all the courses I had with engineering. But I found out I really did not like the ruralness of the campus. And it was kind of weird to me because I always thought maybe I'd want to be somewhere a little more desolate, a little more away from home, so I don't have to deal with my parents every weekend. But I found out it, it just wasn't for me being that rural. And when we went to U W Madison, I was like blown away. I mean, I love the city life. I love the hustle and bustle of it. It was just amazing to see the campus and all the different stuff it had there really just made me know that I wanted to go somewhere a bit busier. And then also with the cost of it, I also advanced and we went to Disney last year, which was a very, very expensive trip that my parents had to pay for. And I don't think I would have been able to go on this trip if we, if it wasn't already covered because of my other trips I had to go on for a great while.
Where did you, did you get accepted into Madison or?
I have not. I applied two weeks ago now.
Okay, so you're still in the waiting. Okay.
Having, coming from Plattville and by the way, I I don't recall I was ever saying Deslo, but we Did you take them to Steve's Pizza?
We have a strict timeline.
All right.
And every city path is different.
That's great.
All right. My name is Travis Shyvey. I'm also a avid senior. I've been in avid for all four years of high school, and I also attended the field trip. Most of it was kind of just before I went, I was dead set. I'm going to a four-year university. I thought that's what I would want to do a hundred percent all the way, but it ended up not being the case. And I realized after going to Madison Area, it's like that was like probably my top choice. Just because I knew that I would finish it in two years, get my associate's degree. And personally, I wanted to be a police officer my entire life, basically. So just being able to finish school quicker and get out of there and start working and living on my own and doing all those things myself. That kind of helped open my mind to more possibilities and then also just being so close to people, like talking in class with the students that are there, like group presenting, was actually a lot easier after the trip. Because it felt like I got a lot closer with most of my classmates, people I've known for four years, but haven't really made those connections quite yet. And that was a really good opportunity to reach out and meet more people, I guess. And then, yeah, just figuring out what I wanted to do for college and after high school.
If I could encourage you, my son took a similar standpoint. He actually started at U W Plattville in their criminal justice program and finished, left after his first year and went to a technical school. He's now the police lieutenant in Williams Bay. So if you're looking to make a connection to get a ride along, just do a visit on site. Talk to me.
I will thank you.
All right, kind of going off of what Travis, I'm sorry, I'm Hannah. I'm also here in avid. I've been in avid since eighth grade. Kind of going off of what Travis said, like just the memories that we made, like everyone like bonded so well. Like we have already like a small avid family, we call it, and like going on this trip and just being with each other for like those two days, like we really got along and like learning with like the different personalities and stuff, like how to work together and like have a good time. And at the end of the first night after we like studied and stuff, we went to the pool and like played tag in Sharks and Middles, and that was just like so much fun. We had such a good time. However, it was also extremely educational. Like Ms. Griswold said before, like it's a lot of time and money that like it would have taken me like a lot more effort to do it outside of school, but then having it in those two short days and going to all four of those schools, that was really, really helpful. Like outside of avid, I've only toured one other college and that I had to do like over spring break. So having it built into school, it's like really, really helpful to see like if you want to go to a four-year or two-year. And I loved U W Madison, but with also avid, like I've learned, like I want to go to a tech school. So while yes, I love the U W Madison campus, like I plan on doing something else, and I know the junior class will benefit from this as much as I did.
I'm Rose and I've been in avid since freshman year. And my first point that I wanted to make is that although it might not like like I don't really agree with this because I'm going, I want to go to college. I think it might help encourage kids that don't really plan on going to college to like at least look into it more and go visit campuses because you don't really know for sure what just when you're in high school. And then it also gave me a more like a better feel of my ideal college experience because the visiting Madison made me realize I don't really want to go to a huge school where it's like really confusing to find your classes and everything. I might want to go somewhere a little smaller like Whitewater. And it also gave me a chance to better envision myself in a college setting. It also provided a chance to ask about more specific programs and to talk to teachers about any confusing things that come up, like especially because it's hard looking stuff up on your own. And then like Hannah and Travis said, it just made me feel a lot closer to all my classmates and it made the classroom like such an easier place to learn and grow in. And overall, I think the trip is an experience I will remember for a really long time due to just being super fun and inspirational.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Looking for a motion to approve the
Approved the avid overnight travel request as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the avid overnight travel request. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to the approval of the four minutes from September ninth. Anybody have any questions or things that need to be addressed or hearing none, then looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the for a school board meeting, the minutes of the school board meeting of September ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the September ninth, twenty twenty-four, so regular session, school board meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. General and other fund bills.
The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number one five three oh seven four through one five three one nine eight. Wire transfers three oh one through three oh nine and A C H numbers one thirty-four through one seventy-two in the combined amount of three hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-four cents. You might have noticed at the bottom of the cover page, I also included our debt obligations. We pay our debt twice a year, October and April. So the October payments are for the interest payments and our three long-term debt obligations. And then in the packet, I think I included a separate memo on explaining several of the bills in your
Yep. Yep. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Turn or?
Well, I think I have a question that we all want answered. What's the kidney table?
The table.
It allows the teacher to sit in the middle and be closer to all the little
I could have, but I wanted to ask you.
No questions for Mr. Tyler like this week? Surprisingly none. Yeah, I'm usually the one with them. All right, just looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the general other fund bills of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, check numbers one five three zero seven four to one five three one nine eight. Wire numbers three zero one to three zero nine and A C H numbers one three four to one seven two in the combined amount of three hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-four cents as presented.
Is there a second? I'll second that. So it moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, check numbers one five three zero seven four to one five three one nine eight. Wire numbers three oh one to three oh nine and A C H numbers one three four one seven two in the combined amount of three hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-four cents. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, next item is the resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed three million dollars.
And this may be new for the board members because you haven't seen this for years.
Thank you very much. Well, I did, I did get a phone call today from a member and I said, I'm pretty sure Bill will present what it is.
Yeah, so this used to be a typical annual kind of process we went through and the purpose of the tax anticipation or the line of credit, which is really what tonight's action is, is to borrow funds to meet our cash flow needs because of the timing of when we receive our tax monies and our state aids and our federal dollars don't match up with our obligations. Think of it as a checking account in terms of meeting your own cash flow. It's pretty similar, just larger numbers, basically. We've been fortunate where our cash flow in terms of our reserve and our fund balance has been sufficient enough. We haven't needed to do that.
Right.
And
Last two, two.
Yeah, for the last two years, right. And, and prior to that time, we've been doing what's called a line of credit. The tax anticipation note process is borrowing money, say like three million dollars and borrowing that basically for up to just short of twelve months. And that process is used, and if you go, Jason, I included a note under the borrowing. Oh, you gotta go back to the agenda. I'm sorry. The cash flow borrowing note, and you'll see the history of what we have done over time in terms of borrowing to meet cash flow needs of the district. So traditionally back, you know, I went back to the nineties here, tracking that over time, you'll see the amount that's been borrowed, the interest rate and then the cost to doing that. And that remained as a note really up until I think two thousand thirteen, and our cash flow became a point where we didn't need that money all year. So why pay the interest all year?
Right.
So then we moved to a line of credit and we just borrow those funds as we need those.
Yes. So when the funding comes in, we pay it off right away and
Correct.
Yeah.
But, but to give a context, there was a time where we had what we called an overlapping short-term note. So what that means is, is do you have enough funds to pay off last year's note before you borrow your new note? And we moved out of that in the early two thousand and since that we haven't had an overlapping borrowing for, for a number of years. And as, as Julie just mentioned, for the last two years, we haven't had to do the borrowing. Now, you may have noticed if you looked at any of that paperwork, you can't just borrow whatever you think you want.
Right.
You have to go through and demonstrate at least through some analysis of, of the dollars. And the reason for that is to prevent local governments from borrowing money at a low rate, turning around and investing in it and making money. You can really go, money, does that make sense?
All the states can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, so you can see, you know, over time, we had borrowed a fair amount of dollars. You can borrow up to five million. And, and if you need more than that, you have to go through a different provision called safe harbor. And then you need to demonstrate and show on a daily basis what you need, why you need that amount. The one negative, other than the interest cost of borrowing money is it impacts the school district if you also during the year needed to do, wanted to do long-term borrowing. So you had a referendum, you're, you know, doing a construction project. Because school districts are limited in the amount of money they can borrow, short-term, long-term. And have it qualified, it's called bank qualified loans, which is a much more attractive interest rate. So it saves money for the district and the taxpayers. That limit is ten million dollars. So one of the things you might notice if you look at our long-term debt obligations, when we had the referendum in two thousand and fifteen, that was for twenty million dollars. We broke that into two calendar years in terms of the borrowing, so we could take advantage of that bank qualified interest rates. If we had to do short-term borrowing in those years, we wouldn't have been able to take that advantage of that.
Yeah.
So that would have been a higher cost for our taxpayers and the school district. The reason this is coming to the board tonight is really to put in motion the paperwork to have this in place if we
If we need it. Yeah.
Because the timeframe is about three to four weeks by the time you get the commitment letter and the resolutions and all of that paperwork done. So that's why it's coming this evening. When we've done the line of credit, we worked, when we started this with People's Bank and now Advia, they give us the, the prime rate, which is really considered one of the best rates they, they provide their most trusted creditors. So that's a good rate. I, I put in there what the cost would be per day to be borrowed up to three million. But at this point, the variables are, we don't know what our state aids are. We don't know the results of a referendum in November. So all those are variables that may impact the need to borrow. So those are, you know, some of the things we're looking at. So again, what this is putting in motion really is the paperwork to allow us the opportunity if we need to go forward with the power. Does that make sense?
I, I think it's worth noting as well that it was a lot of work, a lot of fiscal responsibility to get to the point where we did not need to do any credit liner borrowing the last two years and not having any interest costs. As we move forward, and even with the referendum, that ad hoc committee recommendation did recommend spending down the fund balance to fifteen percent, which will require us to then cash flow borrow. And so we will see more than likely, even with the referendum, the need to go back to assuming the fund balance goes down and need to go back to the structure where we're then short-term borrow.
If we were borrowing for the whole year and doing a promissory, you know, instead of the line of credit, we would bid that out with a number of financial institutions and then those bid results would be presented to the board. And that's what process we used to use up until two thousand thirteen.
And Bill, it's, is it still legal to go ahead and do the cash flow borrowing and then make the interest out of that? It's just capped? Or did they, that law change years ago?
No, you can still do it as long as you follow the process and up to that five million amount. If you go over that, then you have to it's an arbitrage calculation where you have to pay back the earnings above the cost, the actual profit.
Yeah, they used to, schools, yeah, they used to make profit off of that more. So they changed those.
So the borrowing is for a year, it's up to three million dollars and you know, it gives the authorities, assuming the board approves the resolution. And there's a number of signatures to be, we saw in the packet, that involves all the board officers because it's borrowing money.
Do you anticipate needing to borrow in excess of two million? Is that why? Because the last probably ten years or so, you funded a two million line of credit? You're anticipating more than that?
I wanted to have that coverage just in case, I guess, because it really, at this point, it doesn't cost the district anymore.
Right.
Our cost is basically getting the Corals and Brady result, you know, that's about twenty-five hundred dollars. So we never need it. It doesn't cost the district anymore. But to answer your question, I, I guess probably just hedging, kind of anticipating what might be the unknowns this year.
Sure.
And just giving us that much more flexibility. So.
I have a question. I don't know how to frame it without going down a rabbit hole or getting into a political conversation. But why? Why is the state not aware of this, that the district has to borrow money? Seemingly they know they're going to have to give a state aid. They have to pay at some point. Why are they putting it on us to now pay a fee of?
They, they are. They calculated and that was a discussion that I know W A S B, the superintendent's groups had with state leadership. And the reality is that they fund schools upfront in a fashion that they don't have to short-term borrow, that the state would have to short-term borrow. And so it was them not wanting to incur the interest cost was the explanation that was given to us, that they did look at that and calculate that and determine that they didn't want to.
And as part of that, they do provide, I think it's a resolution, the school board can, can pass where they will divvy out ten percent of the equalization, like each month until but if you go down that path, what Jason says is true, is that then there's a reduction on what the interest they would have normally received or earned during that time period that they don't get. So there's no, I don't know a school district that would do that quite often.
Sure, they want to make the money off.
Yeah.
Even when they're in a
That's why they want to get into got a lot of comments on that one.
I don't know what percentage of school districts do cash, but it's pretty common. It really is. I don't you know, it's
More than half the percentage will borrow, you know.
Yeah.
These, those were the first two years of my career that
I know, yeah, I know the last two years, you've said that this was an anomaly. Yeah. Any other questions? Then looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed three million dollars as presented.
Is there a second? I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing the taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed three million dollars, three million dollars. Roll call, please.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Eric Gordon.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Kostak.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Corpus.
Yes.
Mr. Jaime Saravia.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item is the student representative report.
Were you guys here last week?
They were.
Okay, so I just said
Oh, yes. This is Mr. Andre, by the way.
You guys do it.
Okay, at the high school, the Pachanla Top Flap, that was senior night for tennis, which happened last Thursday. In the middle, yeah. Um, in the middle was Hope Squad's first meeting and that took place on Friday. So Hope Squad is planning on their homecoming float and also setting things up for their first retreat to learn about mental health and how to help people in the school struggling. On the right is some upcoming athletic events. A lot of sports are having conferences coming up in these next couple of weeks. And then on the bottom are the dress up days that were decided by Open Student Council for homecoming. Going up on homecoming, one acts are also happening, so rehearsals are going on for that right now too.
When is homecoming?
Um, the dances and the football, and the game would be October eleventh.
Okay.
Over at the middle school, um, they've just had their first cross-country meet and basketball game. Um, so the sports are kind of in their prime season right now, really taking off. Going off of that, student councils also had their first meeting and a bunch of the other major clubs and are also looking forward to the nine square installation.
It's up and being, it's seventeen teams attend the meals for cross-country.
Wow.
I think it's about to be had.
So for Westside, your book orders are in now, you can order them before, if you order before October thirty-first, you get ten percent off. And the bottom left is third grade students in PLW programming Rosie the robot dog to move from point A to point B using loops and conditions. And then kindergarten, the students prepared for their first library book by learning about responsible book care. While Ms. Smith's second graders set up crimes against books for investigation. Then agricultural day field trip for high school was great. Students learned about animals, eating habits, growth and lifespan. And they appreciated the agriculture department's organization at the high school for third graders, it was. Tivitz, the third graders at Tivitz also went to the high school with F F A to learn about agriculture. Tivitz, the third graders at Tivitz also went to the high school with FFA to learn about agriculture. Um, picture day for Tivitz is Wednesday, October second. Uh, spiritware store is open online until September thirtieth. Both Mr. And Mrs. F ran the mile with their gym class, which is pretty cool. And then third graders practiced fluency and expression by reading their book reports with a reading buddy. And the boss. Over at Jackson, uh, Mrs. Quiz's class used their imaginations and art class like Carol and the Purple Cran. Um, third graders also visited the high school, learn about agriculture and farm animals. There you can see them learning. And then students conducted the heat is on experiment using foil, cardstock, foam, hand warmers and a thermometer. To test which material was the best uh insulator and conductor in Ms. Matt and Morris's class.
Um, over at options on the top left, that was a field trip to the school forest. And we learned about invasive versus non invasive species and other types of crops and natural plants that they would find. And then on the bottom left, um, they have a school podcast and that was super cool. Um, there are two participants featured, it's everyone, and they were Kayla and Noah. And they talked about how to get a head start on earning college credits as a high schooler. Um, Noah's currently a senior and he's also teaching classes at UW Madison. So I was really cool too. And then in the middle, um, all the elementary schools are looking forward to trick or trick or treat night. And so they're um spreading the word to their students and then the high school is also preparing for that. And they're also encouraging their uh juniors to start studying for the ACT and they're setting up uh some study days coming in February and January. Um, for CCA, um, in the community first aid um and CPR certification class that they're encouraging their students to take. And then there's two pictures on the top there of some of their students and they're building this pavilion over at the middle school. And then um they're just starting to pour concrete in that. And then on the bottom in the middle there, that was um. A career visit from LNR Springs and the students just got to learn about different manufacturing opportunities in the local area.
Uh, children's story time uh begins, it starts tomorrow uh nine thirty AM. Uh, it's gonna be cool if you join us at third for dancing, finger play stories, crafts and sensory event. Um, young athletes at Elkhorn that's beginning soon, October second, uh for kids two to seven years old. Uh, they're looking for volunteers and participants. And then Operation Warren is uh providing free codes for local families. Um, that's October twelfth and November ninth from eleven to two P M. At Jackson Elementary School.
Great, wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, we have um Sarah Bosch next for our group picture report.
He's so well trained. Hi, I'm Sarah Bosch. I'm the six twelve director of instruction. Um, tonight I am here with uh several other members of the middle school and the high school to provide the annual ACP update for you. All right, so just to recap, because we love to use our acronyms in education, ACP stands for academic and career planning. Academic and career planning is a student driven process where we're really trying to help kids figure out. What their interest areas are, what their strengths are, so that they can find their passion and their purpose in life. We really want to help build those knowledges, knowledge and their skills that can maybe inform choices about what's gonna happen to them life after high school was. Um, some presentations that we have brought to you before, just to recap where we've been. Um, we talked about establishing student success time at the high school. Um, making sure that we had time built into the school day for that academic and career planning process. Um, we've talked about the products that students are creating during um this process with the eighth grade summary. Um, presentations and also the E presentation uh or E portfolios and the high school. And then um the development of our website, which has each one of those lessons on there for families to be able to access. Um, and I have that link there if you wanted to dig into that, but we did kind of talk about that at the last meeting. So. Um, so that leads us to where we're at this year. Um, last year, we actually had a very unique opportunity um to attend an event through CISA two. And we had representation from uh two counselors from the middle school, the high school, two counselors from the high school and two counselors. Um, from the middle, from the elementary school to head um over to Gateway. Um, where we did this activity called ACP asset mapping. And what it was, was an opportunity for us to be able to take a look at our ACP process and see where our strengths were and what our areas for growth were and career readiness. And out of that mapping came these four kind of areas for us where we really needed to work on at the secondary level. So we really wanted to focus on our staff having a clear understanding of student career readiness. Um, another area was career readiness, professional learning is provided to all educators. Regularly on how students conduct career conversations with students. Career readiness, professional learning is provided regularly on how teachers. And all subject areas can help students understand how the content that they're actually teaching connects to careers. So having those conversations within the context of those classes. And then making sure that we're doing a really good job of informing families about what's happening with their students' academic and career planning process. Not just showing what's happening on the website, right? Getting more personal. So at the middle school and at the high school, we took these areas for growth. And we really started to brainstorm what that could look like to be able to meet these areas. And I think I might have said to the high school, if you had a magic wand, what are the things that we would do? What are the things that we do? So we started brainstorming. We have lists upon lists in each building. And we really needed to try to organize that and come up with what our next steps are. Um, and who better to prepare and share with you um our next steps at the high school specifically? And then we'll get into the middle school quickly as well at the end of the presentation. Um, but if you want to see people uh shine when they start uh brainstorming about their purpose. Um, and their passion in life, it's these two. So I'll let you guys go.
Mr. Rob, what happened?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna start with a story.
Oh, which which story are you going with? I'll write. Tell me your story. For, yeah, I apologize for my attire, but this is why. But I find it difficult to put on dress pants and tie everything before my hands. So I fill up my bicycle. It's not as absurd.
I'm Shannon Workman, so one of the school counselors um at the high school. Um, and we're gonna talk to you today about like those next steps that um Sarah just mentioned. Um, so we were um. Last time we were here, we talked about that portfolio presentation and that 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 end product that our seniors were working on. And what that really did was let our seniors kind of reflect on what they did in the high school, like what opportunities they took advantage of. What things they had um dual credit, they had taken industry certifications and they they're in this place at the end of senior year to reflect on that. Now those SST lessons build to that end product, right? All of all four years. Um, to try to be a little bit more intentional with those lessons and with what we're doing in the building, we started using this catchphrase, making the most of high school. So like talking to them about how can you take advantage of all these amazing opportunities that Elkhorn has for you? And how can you do that intentionally, not just to plug in something on your portfolio, but really for you and get you ready? Um, and so these are, um, we started using that. We started focusing on helping our students understand these. And we still knew through that asset mapping that we had more work to do. Um, so do you wanna go to the next slide?
Um, and I've been blessed to have been here through the entire journey. Um, so reflecting back. You know, I'm gonna dress a little and say I'm just thankful that and excited that this district. Early on was a leader in recognizing that our students' future success is way more than a GPA or a rank. Um, and then that evolved and so we quickly rallied behind academic and career planning. And worked really hard to identify and enhance other high impact experiences. That really tell a more complete story of our students' development. And that's where these five items really are the high impact experiences.
Let me interject really quick, cause I know Mr. Shop wouldn't share this, but. Correctly, if I'm wrong, you were one of five in the entire state, the pilot of the academic career planning and. Yeah, I know the the school counselor team at that time was recognized by the state. For what they had put together, what they had done as as the leaders in that Wisconsin.
So we got to see all the bumps in the road with transitioning to new career information systems and onboarding to that and. But you're also a leader in developing the systems then that filter down to our kids. And so you're, that's why I were. Again, I just thought full of blessings in that. There there's never a point where it's good enough. So we're always at an event because we were early on boarders. And so we're always looking to the next step. What's the next thing coming? This is the um, the big, like I said, high impact um experiences that we're blessed to be able to offer our kids. From um a sequence in, I guess it would be a course she, in a specific career pathway. That's an important experience for kids. Exposure to a career and technical student organizations and all the leadership that comes with that and exposure to real life um. Career people and opportunities. Dual credit opportunities are. To the nth degree in this district, it's awesome. Um, industry recognized credentials given our kids a little bit of competitive advantage when they leave us. At whatever it is they pursue and then work based learning experiences.
Could you share a couple of examples of like the industry recognized credentials that kids aren't?
So like in our, well, computers for professionals would be example of what. It's a standalone course in the IT realm, but within that are invented like four or five Microsoft Office credentials. And so it's built into the curriculum, but our. Our mechanics has ASV certifications along with it. And it's like. I liken it to like like in our conversations and our partnership with Gateway Technical College, they like using the term stackable credentials. The idea is. You know, we've got your best interest, student best interest at heart. So if you take one class with us, that gives you an advantage out in the workforce. If you finish a technical diploma, if you take a bunch of places, you get a technical diploma, you're at more of an advantage. You can carry that over into a associate degree. So we really rally behind that and how we build our our pathways. Then that evolved into the district getting into the redefining ready movement. And I love that we, you know, we have a readiness dashboard on our website. So we track these important things. So it's not just lip service. We recognize them as very important. And I guess simply. Next steps, what we're thinking, it's, you know, some, it's gotta involve, I think somehow um just. Continuing to work with our kids to take even more ownership in their four year planning. Um, and probably checking in more regularly with their individual progress in those five areas. That we already tracked. Here's our master, but you as an individual, more regular check in with that, so.
Um, so last year at the end of the year, we kind of take that look at what we did and what and then set goals for the next year. So when we did that process with admin, uh we set um, we set a three year plan. Um, and this is really focused on what are we doing with our staff? What are we doing with our students to help build this culture of making the most of high school? How do you um help everybody know about all these opportunities? How do you help them connect to those opportunities and take advantage of those? Um, so a couple of things on here on what we're doing this year. So readiness Wednesdays, that's our monthly staff meeting. Um, with um the staff in our building and what we've committed to doing is doing um professional learning at those um staff meetings. To help our staff have an awareness of um CTSOs, what are they? What do they do? What are the dual credit opportunities? Why would a student connect to these and what circumstances? And just help our staff have a better understanding of them. We have a lot of knowledge about them, but our staff doesn't and our staff connect with kids all day long, right? And so just having some of those, just the real natural um recommendations from their, from their teachers, from their um just coaches, people that they are around. And say, hey, you should maybe think about joining um DAKA. You should maybe think about um taking a class next. You know, you've done really great in my classes. Maybe you wanna consider taking something over at Gateway next because that would be the next step. So you wanna build that capacity in the building. Um, continued one on one advising, there's never been a time when staff and um students and families haven't been able to schedule with us. They can schedule anytime all year, sit down, look at their students, on the courses, what they're doing next, get some help with that. But we, in addition to that, being intentional about like right now, we're doing senior meetings. So we check in and say, where are you at in the process? What are you planning on doing after high school? How can we be of assistance? Um, and we're adding um like a sophomore check in because that sophomore year with her families, with all of the opportunities we have in this district. A ton of things kick in eleven, twelve. And so it's super overwhelming to think about, what am I gonna do this next two years and how do I plan for that? And so we're gonna be more intentional about that this year. Um, student activities fair, we just did this um this la- last week. Um, and what it was is we stopped for about an hour and all of the students in the building. Um, got to attend four different rotations to see and learn about CTSOs. Student group, leadership groups and our clubs and organizations that we have in our building. So um they went to four of them, they got to explore, they had to go to one CTSO and um check that out. Um, it was really cool to see the students that were part of those organizations giving like their presentation about what, you know, what they're doing, what they're learning in there. Um, and we've already heard a ton of feedback.
Powerful and impact.
Uh, I.
I was just a day and it's never too late. It was a good reminder of that. I had a senior from here, their senior meeting. And they are in mostly today and figuring out which of two events they're gonna compete in.
Because they did.
Because of activity there.
And I would say I didn't anticipate that. I thought the seniors were like their seniors, they were, you know, figured out what they wanted. But I keep hearing from seniors that are like gonna get more involved and active and I I hadn't anticipated even that impact. So that was really cool to see. Um, another thing that we do is career day. Um, that's. We changed the format of that about, this will be our fourth year. So I think, um, so when Joanne Powell was here, we changed the format. That traditional career fair with the um walk around the tables wasn't really working. We had tried some panels. Um, during the school day and had kids come down if they were interested in help. And that just really wasn't getting the engagement we wanted. So we changed in this format where the students um go, they pick presentations to go to, and I think they do three, if I'm remembering right. And then they sit in the room and hear that um just some, just a more thorough explanation about a career path. Um, some of the, some of them are panels, so it may be a panel of health um professionals. Um, so they have a little bit of everything. Some of them are more specific. Um, and the kids really enjoy that day. Um, so that is linked in there than invite. So if you wanna come, I know some of you have been to it and seen it. Come watch it, come attend it. Um, if you know somebody that, so yeah, if you know other business people, we try to find stuff for all students. So through those SST lessons, kids will um, they save what their potential careers and interests are. So we know kind of in the building, kids are interested in, you know, careers in certain areas. We try to find people for everybody. Um, and then our last thing that we're working on this year is redesigning that course selection guide, that offering guide that we have on the website is right now by department. Um, adding to that a way for students to say, I'm interested in this career pathway and what courses might I take across departments that would fit with that. Um, and then the next two years out, just looking to continue to expand on.
What's the date of your career day?
On November sixth.
Okay, so yeah, board members, I mean, several of you are in. Unique, interesting careers. It'd be a great opportunity if you created the time to present on that and the kids come and rotate through the classroom and.
It's a good day.
Yeah, I agree with that, so.
That'll Wednesday?
It is.
This is just that, this is our professional learning plan for the year. The, um, I mentioned that we were doing that on the um. When opening up, I think the one we did in August was really um unique. We did a CTSO fair for the staff. So um each of the CTSO advisors gave a presentation and all of our staff in our building attended all of them. So everybody in the building heard a presentation from all of um from FFA, um, DAKA, CCLA, Skills USA and Hosta. So that was really powerful because I um, I went through the rotation with a group and I kept hearing staff members ask like. Oh, we do this project in class. I wonder if the kids who do this project could enter it in your competition that you have if they were a member of that. So that was really cool to see them start thinking in terms of how could they um work together. Um, that was neat, so.
Yep, you see the monthly calendar. So like uh, this Wednesday, the five components of readiness, so. And leading all the way through like, I'm I'm gonna jump down to the bottom because one of my, the things I'm most excited about is just this guarantee built in. Built on the time with our grade level SST advisors. Um, and it just gets questions answered ahead of time. It helps build that common vocabulary that we're all using with kids. And it's just a consistent message and that it's our culture, you know, and that's what we're. And it's my pleasure to invite, you've always been invited to portfolio presentation night. We may not have told you that explicitly, but I I hope we did, but this thing is a part of our invitation, so. That'll be engagement. This too, if you haven't, if you haven't seen them. Our kids are impressive, you know that.
Oh.
Put to hear it.
Yeah, that that was the last, the last couple of times you.
We changed it to a different day.
Yeah.
You guys could come, you know, it has been a.
Yes, decommunicated.
Decommunicated that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to point out the quote at the bottom, that's again, your quote.
Yes. If we are, if we aren't. Great.
So, yeah, um, hello everyone. So as we're all working towards our kids uh, graduating college career life, rather than chasing their dream to be prepared to do it through the. You know, making the most of high school and hitting those five components that you just heard about. Um, it becomes evident real fast with the amount of great opportunities that we have that continue to expand in this district. That in order to hit the ground running, we have to take care of some work to a digital school out. So um, we uh, right away after our asset, best asset mapping. Almost said something, I shouldn't say that. We started last year with inviting the principals from the various high schools which live in the district. They came and they spoke to our eighth grade uh, students just to give them to start to think about. And here's some of the words that you have to hear four or five times before you start understanding what they mean and how to take advantage of that. And give them in front of them because um, all of our students have individual needs and paths. And at the end of the day, the majority of our students at the middle school go to the Burton Moyer High School, but it's not for everyone. And even if they do go there first, it may not be where they end up wanting to finish. So building an awareness around what that looks like, what it's, what those options are that are available to them was important to us. Uh, so going into this year, we're again going to do that uh, kind of on that uh, larger scale to the kids. So you could hear about the, the CCA and options and, and the traditional high school. But um, the other thing that we really wanted to bring in was that kind of one-to-one component. Because we do know that it's, it's individual and having conversations with kids about um, you know, the best fits and their interests and their strengths. And, and starting that conversation now and early, early kind of from our perspective and getting that done before Christmas. And we know that high school registration will take place shortly after that. So that they can uh, get kind of, again, those interests aligned, interests aligned to courses, to hitting the ground running. So they can make the most out of high school, including that freshman year, right? You know, uh, which sides we've always done amazing work with our kids coming over, but we can do more to kind of build that background knowledge for them, making informed decisions. Like that's something that we wanted to. So um, we are, our student uh, services department is just going through a lot of, a lot of learning right now, right? A lot of, a lot of acronym learning of their own to kind of get up to speed on what is a CTSO, right? You know, kind of, kind of stuff like that. So that we can have conversations again with those kids at that one-to-one level, get them start thinking about uh, futures, so they're taking advantage of stuff right away. And then um, in upcoming years, we'll grow on that into, you know, into more kind of job shadows and whatever may come next. So the big lift for us this year is reintegrating um, those one-to-one meetings with eighth graders with, with a purpose. So that they're just, they're important going, going into the next, the next four years of their school career.
Our student services at the middle school will be attending all those sessions that you saw up on the slideshow from high school. It's very good awareness.
Hey, and Mr. McBurney, could you share, because I think you've done some really innovative creative things, even. On that, starting on the pathway of industry recognized certifications or I know there's some classes the students can take at the middle school in that same vein, whether they're an actual.
Yeah, so one of the things we've done from a curricular standpoint is to align certain pathways that we have, such like tech ed, um, art. So that as kids transition to the high school, they can maybe bypass one of those courses to get them further down the line. Something that are specifically um, interested in, uh, not, you know, directly relatable, but what does it look like for us to? Like we, we have our new STEM coming up too, where we're giving kids like micro credentials and, and things that they're um, just interested in. So then they can use them with independence, which again, like, that's not an industry-based certification or something like that. But just again, that, that mindset of like, they're setting, setting a goal, be- becoming good at a certain skill, maybe able to use that and teach other people to do it um, as well.
Questions for the high school or the middle school, this is Bob.
I don't really have a question as much as I um. I rarely am on social media, but I happened to go on this morning and one of the first posts that popped up was a question posed by somebody in a group called Walworth County Network or something like that. And the question was, what's the best high school in Walworth County? And so I'm like, ooh, I'm interested in hearing what people have to say. And there were a lot of comments. So as I was reading through, um, you know, there's lots of people commenting on a lot of different schools. Um, Elkhorn, I felt came up most frequently. And there was, and I need to go back into the post, and I have time this morning to do this, but. There was one comment from an individual, from a parent of a student who had attended Elkhorn High School, now graduated from Elkhorn High School. Um, one of the most glowing reports I've ever seen, I'm like, this needs to be like advertised. Like it was, it was amazing, but she was very detailed on her explanation of why it was such a great school for her student. And the student had apparently been at multiple different high schools and ended up at Elkhorn. And they were, the parent was so impressed by um, the career and college readiness. And that, and she said, it's not just from the counseling department, it is every teacher, every, she's like, we felt that our student got help from every single teacher that they had. And, and that they were very intentional about preparing my student for um, life after high school. So I'm gonna screenshot it, I'm gonna send it to you guys and i- it's worth reading. And there were several other comments about that along those same lines too, so. Great job, it's being noticed. I've seen it, you know, on social media, which, like I said, I rarely go on, but. That popped up very quickly in my feed this morning and it was a delight to be able to read that, so great job, guys.
Nice, nice.
I love the, the making the most of high school part and, and how you combine that and from that. Um, acknowledgement and that awareness and I, I think it's just what you all created, the, the high school, the team. And you, you include the CCA and, and options there. But the fact that we're by far, I think we're around the 80th largest high school in, in the state. Yet we have the highest number of uh, dual credit seats in the entire state of Wisconsin and the highest number of industry recognized uh, certifications completed. And it's really a testament to the um, great work that the team has done and the access and opportunities that the students have been presented with. And the students for stepping up and taking advantage of that. So um, kudos to you and, and I love the portfolios. Because I think that just helps create such an awareness for them and their parents of that incredible work that they've done in high school. And gives them an opportunity to stop, reflect back and it's, you know, take a moment to appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I think we're moving on to the referendum update.
All right, we've been moving along, we've had a number of presentations with uh, PTO, CAA organizations. And uh, there is a hyperlink in the organizing end of the road shows. If you want to show up to any of those uh, presentations, please feel free to do so. You know, Bill and I will uh, be doing a short. And it's really hard, it'd be easier if we just did a long one. But a, a short video loom of um, speaking to the referendum so that we can push that out to the, I don't know, what, close to eight thousand emails that we have through employees, parents, families, community partners. That we can uh, get that pushed out and share to bring greater awareness to our website, which is excellent. Uh, the team's done a great job putting together our, our website, the information on there. And if you just go to our school website, you can't miss it because it's linked at, at the top. And so when people click here, so we want to drive uh, awareness to that. And really, we've covered all the high-level topics with just the most common questions and facts that we feel people will come up with as you click on these, they'll drop down. The, there's a number of videos, a couple of videos related to school funding and finance in the state. And then a listing of the important dates. The large community information night, um, it'll be at the high school auditorium, it's October twenty first. The day before early in person voting starts. But we do know that SST ballots are in help as well, so that's where we want to get the, the long video and that presentation.
Are there any of these events that, where you're specifically wanting school board member support or?
I definitely have the community uh, information meeting, but um, again, open invitation to any of the other ones. I think that any of the groups or the, the clubs, like I know I'll be presenting, I'd have to look at the calendar again. To Rotary Club, you know, I'm a member in Rotary, but it's always good for them to hear from someone else and so forth. Uh, there's a presentation, did Lions Club invite or ask for us to be there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Over.
Um, both of those usually come with a mail, so they're good news to go to. But.
There is a Facebook page, Friends, Friends is about.
Yeah, that's a separate organization, group, but an advocacy group that.
It's an advocacy group, so he wants to engage with people on that.
That's had a lot of dialogue.
Answer questions.
Had a lot of dialogue.
Yes, it has, and it's been very positive.
Yeah. Yeah.
And people have been pretty respectful on it.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's a good one.
Yeah.
I think what it really boils down to and at the end of the day is um. You know, how do you take a complex subject and
Yeah.
Um, help people understand what's going on without um, I'm looking, not finding my chart that's on.
Always under funded, and actually you were at the right spot.
Oh, man.
You're looking for the chart?
Yeah, okay. I, I think that just understanding this concept, and again, it's not, I've seen some people concerned that, well, you're blaming the state. I, I don't even think it's so much blaming the state, I, I have a good relationship with our local representatives. This ship's a reality, is in nineteen ninety-nine, the state stopped increasing revenue limits and mining with inflation.
Right.
And they emphasized that if you want to increase your revenue limit, the mechanism is there, you have to go to a referendum. And it's, again, not putting the blame there, it's just, and I get it, there's some that philosophically believe if schools need more money, that should be the local community that votes to support it, not me as a legislator, voting to increase the tax. Put it in the hands of the locals. And I, I think that's probably, you know, the message. And, and what it really boils down to is if you don't want large class sizes, if you don't want longer bus routes, if you don't want less services. Then the district needs the referendum support. If you don't mind large class sizes, if you don't mind risking, you know, what we have in place, then, you know, we saw the great work that they did, you know. Uh, and that the high school's doing, then, you know, that, that's really, it's the binary choice there, so. Yeah, I don't know, any thoughts, questions or, or what you're seeing from the chat or that we can better clarify? I know it's really still and the main message is kind of.
Yeah.
It's really nice.
I think, I, I've had a few people ask me, you know, how do you respond? Because it is a complicated subject and I'm like, well, there's a couple of things we can do is go on the website, educate yourself in the language and be able to, you know, have, and refer people back to the website. Because that is really, that's where the nuts and bolts are. Yes, and then the second piece of advice I have is um. A lot of times people try and approach you from a very emotional um, standpoint. They will come at you with an emotional objection. And you have to take that, not respond emotionally, you have to take that and just come back and present the facts. And just try and really keep it factual versus emotional. Those are my pieces of advice.
I don't know, I don't think there's any task of our work, Bill and I were talking about this today, that we like less than going to referendum.
Oh.
Um, and
Right.
I absolutely wish this had never happened because we would never have to
Right.
go to an opposition referendum. I mean, despite this right here, I mean, even with these two years, you saw, we didn't have to cash blow bar.
Right.
We've been responsible, we've managed it, we've done incredible work as a district, it's just getting a breaking point.
I think, I think the issue is, is that we've never advertised as a school district, how much money we've saved taxpayers over the years. We've just been quietly doing it over a long period of time, always consistently finding ways to fund, to save money. I mean, Bill's been incredible in doing that, but we've never really advertised that as a district. And so now I think people are looking at it like, well, you're being irresponsible. And that's just simply not the case, so.
No, and we're being proactive enough, but it's putting the choice before you.
Right.
Do you want to maintain the referendum?
The reality is, is that the, the measures that you, that we've taken, the things that we, that um, Mr. Tyler, that you implemented uh, with options and with expanding the CCA and all of those things, those, all of those things, all of those factors that contributed to um, us really delaying having to go to an, an operational referendum for many years. Like we would have had to have done this many years ago if all of those things hadn't been implemented. So um, we've put it off as long as we can and we're just at the point where we need to forward this, yeah.
I think um, I was just thinking as they were talking about the high school programs, I, it blew me away last year at the CCA graduation that we now have two of the four largest high schools in Walworth County. And my guess is within two to three years, we'll have three of the five largest with options. And relatively experienced at my school level.
Yeah.
If not three of the four largest, but it's, you know, been incredible.
Yeah.
That's all I have. If you do hear questions or if you see posts or anything like that, I'm happy to chime in and, and just share the factual based information. If I see a point of confusion that's out there, uh, you know, we try to respond to the point.
Great. The other communication opportunity we'll have is the Community Connection will come out early October. And we'll get a section there on the referendum.
Do.
Okay.
And after the meeting, I can show, we did get our posters, the, the, the large boards that will place in like the community locations throughout the ship. And the public library.
You can go on my personal Facebook page and see similar back and forth too. If you want to comment on those, it's been fun.
I'm gonna take a look, whatever.
Okay, um, next item is the recommendations for personnel.
Right, these are personnel recommendations um, for this um, board meeting. We do want to thank um, you know, those that have moved on. Stephanie as a middle school assistant coach, uh, Glenda Heller is being appointed as a special education teaching assistant. Jaclyn Quist as a special teaching assistant. Patrick Paul as a high school custodian. Want to thank Jennifer Masansky um, who's stepping down as a youth cheerleading coach. And uh, Jacob Stilling, who um, is stepping down as the wrestling head coach. Um, I know he was really torn up by that one, he had taken a new um, job in his career and had hoped that he'd have the flexibility in his work to continue doing it, unfortunately it doesn't. But I know he's still going to be involved, especially with the, the youth program. And so what I want to thank him for his time as the head wrestling coach and Russian the vest. And then we have the appointment of Vanessa Eisenberg as a uh, youth cheerleading.
All right, looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug.
And district mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check. And district mandated drug screening. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes and uh, announcements.
Yeah, couple of announcements. So we're looking to schedule a personnel committee meeting on September thirtieth at noon. If that works for the group. If not, um, look to an alternate date of October twenty-first.
I cannot do the thirtieth.
We can always revisit the October twenty-first unless you guys.
We'll be first as long as I'm not in a delivery room. Abby's due on the nineteenth.
Yeah, best of my, twenty-first is, twenty-first will work.
Okay.
I just, I can't put anything more on it in the next two weeks.
No, I understand. And then I did wanna share uh, with you, I put a link in the board notes, the Spectrum News Report. On vaping, they contacted us because we had received that large grant, which we're in the first year of, so. Um, really, Caitlin Blatter, they interviewed, so she can speak to that grant. And um, yeah, it's really a testament to the, the work of the um, school counselors, the guidance team. And the social workers working on that, addressing that issue and receiving that large grant from the state. So encourage you to look at that interview when you have a chance.
Um, do we wanna mention something about the fall regional meeting?
Oh, yeah. Go to the WASD site.
I think I might have on my calendar.
Uh, it is in Burlington.
It's October twenty-second. At, at uh, Veterans Terrace. And that is um, a Tuesday.
October twenty-second?
Yep, so there's a workshop that you can attend at four o'clock, I think, at four o'clock. Um, and then there's, if you don't wanna go to workshop, you don't have to, then, then there's a um, a meeting afterwards. Probably at six, I don't know, I just have the whole thing on my. Three, yeah, thirteen, yeah. Yeah, click on that and it probably has more information. Oh, no, it's just the message.
Yeah, it has the agenda up top here. So we just need to know and um, we can do the six P M registration network.
Yeah, six thirty. And then it, it should tell what the pre-workshop regional meeting is, just about that.
Sustaining success and navigating board changes.
Yeah, that's the feature presentation during dinner.
And then they always do a legislative.
Update, yep. Yeah. So um, I know the last couple of years, it used to be really well-attended when it was here in Elkhorn.
By the Elkhorn Board.
By the Elkhorn Board members. And uh, and then the last couple of years, it's been at Veterans Terrace. And I think Jason and I have been the only ones who showed up, but um, it is worth going to. It is, you know, like, it helps you um, meet other board members from other school districts and stuff too, so.
Yeah, so if you'd like to go, just let me know. Is there anyone that knows now and if you can get registered, otherwise.
You can go ahead and register me because I do have it on my.
I cannot. Being by in French?
No, they actually have a nice food spread.
They do.
They do.
Food is actually very good. It's the reason we go. Um, it's always interesting to hear from the executives or from WASD. Um, it, it gives you a good sense of what they're doing at the state level, so.
Yep, no problem. So just uh, send me an email or Jody an email and we'll get registered for those of you know. Oh, yeah.
And then we're taking over a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll make a voice through here.
All right, do we have a second?
One second.
All right. All in favor say aye? Opposed? Very well done. Thank you, everyone.